Our special town board meeting of February 19th, 2015. Would you like to stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
We're here to workshop our employee handbook. Which do you want to start with?
Well, my understanding is after we have a coherent draft, we'll make that public and people can comment on a coherent draft after we have. Well, I thought we said we would deal with the one that deals with everything.
Since Kathy and Bob are here in their highway department, I'm happy to take input. It's pretty informal. I think it's good that we have these things taped for the public since people won't really come if they'd like to see it at their leisure. I'm happy with that. Which one do you want to start with?
Well, I thought we would start. Bruce, have you done both?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me. I think we said we'd start with the Employment Practices Compliance Manual.
Okay.
The theory is I'll take notes and then we'll do another draft.
Do you have drafts of what we're discussing?
No, we got control now.
Yes. Would you like?
Yeah, be helpful and follow along.
I'll just get some copies now.
It should be here, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Is there anybody left in the highway department today?
Yes, there are.
Good.
I'm sorry, is there a problem? This is a public meeting, right?
It's a public meeting.
Employment Practices Compliance Manual. Okay, how do we want to start?
Let's go page by page. We've all read it, so we should have comments. Then I'll take notes and we'll get back to Richardson. Page two is first thing I have.
What do you have?
Town Board in both places in 131. I take out for just cause in the first bullet. And in the bullet that says make, modify, or enforce, I take out reasonable. These are employees at will.
Okay. Bruce?
Do you have anything else on that page?
No, I'm okay with it.
Sorry, what was your second edit? I didn't hear you.
Second, taking out in the first bullet for just cause comes out.
I heard that.
Reasonable comes out in the bullet that starts make, modify, and enforce.
And the first one is town board for the town of Reinbeck. Town of Reinbeck, town board.
Page three.
I had on 1.4.3 where it says members of a board or commission also include committee and council. We don't have any commissions, but.
We are limited to a provisional employee, probation, temporary, seasonal employees. You want to add?
Where it says members of a board, the last sentence.
Committees.
Committee and council because we have some councils every once in a while.
Appointed members of a committee?
Yeah, of a board, comma, committee, comma, council, or commission.
Commission.
I'm sorry, board, committee?
Council or commission.
Counsel, you mean legal counsel? Or what is counsel?
C-O-U-N-C-I-L.
Supervisory employee for supervisors shall mean, I guess, the department head.
No, no, because the department head, let's say Elizabeth is the supervisor, but Fitzpatrick would be the supervisory employee for maintenance designated.
Gary Slater for cemetery.
Right, that's the distinction between these two paragraphs.
So we just need to clarify that.
So the only departments that have department heads are highway.
Maintenance, cemetery, recreation.
Well, who's the?
Bookkeeping.
Department.
Justice courts, the clerk.
Well, see, and maybe we have to come back to this later. A lot of things, say, you got to talk to the department head if you want to do something like you're not there. You're not there that day, you're sick, who do you call?
We need to decide, especially in town hall, there's no designated supervisor for the town hall employees.
Right, and I think that, Lisa, when I spoke to Richardson about that, he says in small towns, what you do is you point the board member who's around most. So I think you ought to be like the department head for planning, building, all these functions in the town hall.
Let's ask Richardson to, we should enumerate all the departments and assign a title for who the head is.
Okay, so what are the departments? Let's go slow.
Well, there's highway.
Okay, that's easy. Now, is there a department head for the assessors?
Would be the.
Yeah, the first clause, 1.4.1, says it's the assessors are the department heads.
It would be the chair of the assessors department.
Okay, so it's the chair.
We have the justice courts.
Who's the department head there?
The justices.
Both, two department heads?
I raised this, I don't have the answers. I think we should look for guidance. I don't know how it's done. I mean, is there a supervising justice or?
No.
Maybe they're both, maybe two department heads. What else do we have?
We have bookkeeping.
Okay, we got two people there. That's in theory, Shelley.
Well, or it may, she's the bookkeeper to the supervisor.
Okay, so supervisor.
Well, we have the clerk's office, which also includes tax collection and vital statistics.
Again, I think that would be the supervisor.
We have maintenance.
I guess that's Bobby.
We have, we did that already. We have cemetery. We have recreation.
Who's head of recreation?
Our rec director if we hire one, but are they, do they decide or not?
Well, somebody can't come in that day, they want to go home sick, they want to take a vacation, somebody got to sign off. I guess it's the rec director.
Bruce?
Guess that makes sense.
Any other departments that you can think of?
Building department, zoning.
The way we used to do it was if somebody wanted to take off and there wasn't an immediate designated supervisory employee, they just tell you.
That's why I think ultimately supervisor has to be.
Yeah, but there's other things that go on, on a real-time basis, that you want the supervisory employee to make calls.
Yes, yes.
What about building and zoning?
Building, planning, and zoning. And CAB, we have a CAB employee now.
Okay, we need a supervisor for that.
Yep, and I mean, in terms of vacation and approving vacation, does the head of maintenance approve his own vacation?
That's why I.
Does the head of the cemetery approve his own? There, it's a one-employee department.
Yeah, maybe it's the liaison or the supervisor.
All right, I raise these as questions and I think it should be discussed with Richardson and. And can we go on to 1.4.3?
Yeah.
We're saying that elected officials are not employees. Why is that?
I don't know, he wrote it.
What?
He wrote it.
Let's ask.
I guess because employee is a concept where you can control their hours they work, what tasks they do. Let's go through and see.
I just want to know why.
Yeah, where. Technically, an elected official is not an employee and an independent contractor is not an employee.
Right. Okay, full-time employee, I don't have questions. Kathy, did you have?
Yeah, just on the elected official's employee status, but then you're going to have to specify in some places where they are treated as employees.
Yes.
It's very great.
Yes, I have a question on temporary employees will be hired in accordance with civil service guidelines. Again, I don't know if civil service guidelines cover everything, so that's a question I got to ask Richardson.
What, where are you referring to that?
Well, down in 5.1.
Okay.
Or 1.5.
Bruce, you have any comments about full-time or part-time, temporary, seasonal?
No, I believe that he needs to hear that, but I believe that the answer is all employees of the state and subdivisions, political subdivisions of the state are in the civil services.
Even a temporary part-time who works.
Yeah. Because they're all eligible for retirement.
Okay, we over to part two?
Yep. I'm just reading as I go.
In 2.1.2, position vacant announcement, I would say may be posted rather than will be.
Why?
Because we may not do it. Somebody may forget. I don't want somebody to be able to sue us if we forget to do it.
I think we have to post things.
Then we, well, but if you make something mandatory and you don't do it, you've created a problem for yourself. You know, maybe we can make sure whoever is doing it, to make sure John does it, but.
Which sentence are you talking about?
2.1.2.
Okay, we skipped over 2.1.1.
I have nothing in it.
Nothing, that's fine. Kathy?
I think that that section 2.1.1, in terms of just for the highway superintendent, it controverts information that I've read in, you know, the town association towns handbook for that, as well as the Cornell stuff on that. In terms of if there's a position that's vacant, an existing position that's within the budgeted position, the superintendent has a right to fill the position. This does not take that into account. I don't know if that applies to any other department heads or.
I think justices.
And the assessors.
Well, the assessors are all elected. I don't know, they're aide.
Works for them.
Yeah. We should clarify that.
Well, Kathy, you saying that statutory, statutory power that you have? If you could send me the statute, let's see what the statute says.
Send you the reference statute on there.
Or send me where we can find it.
Yep.
Well, all staff are town board appointees, right? Not the crew.
Right.
But the secretary is a town board appointee.
Technically, yes, correct, without the crew.
And all of the other clerks and everything else are all town board appointees.
Okay, so the only exception then, that wouldn't cover for the judges or anything, just covers for the crew, highway crew?
Yeah, that'd be.
I think that's my take on it.
Yeah, that'd be the exception.
We'll check this out with Richardson if you forward any information. Okay, position vacancy announcement will be posted on the town boards.
Yeah, I would say may be posted.
I'm fine with this, I like will be.
Well, I think it should be may. I think you're just creating a problem for yourself and I just hate to see a lawsuit brought that it wasn't posted and we hired somebody.
Bruce?
He's okay.
With what?
What'd he say?
Kathy? May be, will be.
May? Okay, posted on the town website. Then the next thing, applicants may require to sign employment verification with this one back authorization form. Again, do we have these forms? Does anybody know?
I think we do.
I guess we have to ask Shelley.
I remember doing them. I'm sure they're boilerplate, we can.
The application.
We have all three. I don't know why they're not combined, but.
No verification, background verification, authorization. I think we did it with them when we hired our clerk.
And then thereafter, town supervisor, I would add town board member or designate.
To where?
2.1.4. Because I've checked references, I'm sure Bruce has checked references. Somebody should.
Says designate.
Yeah, but that requires a formal designation. I don't think.
How do you know?
What?
How do you know?
Because it says designate, town supervisor, or designate. That means the supervisor has to do a designation, a formal, maybe a formal designation. I would add town board member also can check references.
You know, if the two supervisors going to be the department head, I don't know.
But the town board is doing the hiring. Each board member should have the right to check references.
Well, you can check references.
Well, this says thereafter will check. Again, I don't want somebody suing us saying that the supervisor didn't check the reference but the town board.
But I think our designate covers us.
But that.
You know, I have unofficially pointed designees before without a written consent.
Well, I don't know what the formal.
And let's check it out.
Bruce, how do you want the draft to read?
I'm actually okay with the way it is, so. I understand your point, but you're leaning towards the negligence part of it, where we didn't, we omitted something, we didn't do something.
No, or you do it. You know, somebody can say it's a discrimination claim. Why did this town board member call? Did he, did town board members call on other people?
I think we're fine with it, let's just, let's move on unless check.
Bruce, you changing your mind or you want to be sued?
I'm actually okay with it the way it is. I don't mind being sued. You told me you were going to bring me a cupcake in jail, so.
I'll bring you a cake.
Okay.
Okay, Elizabeth, you have anything else on that page? Page 2.2. Does everybody take on?
I don't know, and I don't, I don't know, I don't know where this new employee oath of office came from. So I'd like to ask about that.
We only have every other page.
Oh, you know why?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, thanks, I'm sorry.
Does Sean have an original that could?
He should, if not, there's another one in my office.
No, we got it from Richardson before Christmas.
Does, what?
We got it from Richardson before Christmas. He should be able to find it.
Okay.
On his email.
There's one, another copy in my office if he doesn't.
Okay, does it give us something that we can easily throw in the copy?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out why I couldn't follow.
Kathy, take this one while you're at it and have him copy both sides. I'm sorry. I'd like to know why I don't, I don't, I think an oath of office is for an elected official or statutory head.
You're talking about 2.3.2.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I don't know where that comes from. I think we got to delete it.
Well, I want to know why, why that's in there.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it the way it is. I think it's a good idea because then everybody's on the same page.
Everybody's promising to uphold the laws of the town and the state. I just want to know why, is this a common practice?
Some towns it is.
I need more information.
Again, it's probably not going to be done and to put something in.
I'd like more information before I decide.
Probationary period? Yeah, I don't know what those rules are. Again, let me ask him.
Yeah, I think they should be in here.
What do you mean in here?
It says that it's.
Reproduce the rules?
Well.
The rules may change from time to time.
Okay.
In accordance with the rules for classified, the following completion maximum probation for the appointment will become permanent on written notice that the employee. Now, do we ever send written notices again?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
I've sent written notices, not for probation, but for other issues.
Well, again. Are we going to build this in for other supervisors and expect it to be followed?
Well, then why have rules if we don't expect them to be followed? If you're just worried about protecting us from lawsuits, if we have a rule, we have to follow them.
Yeah, but we have to, but we don't.
We're just going to say may or should, why bother having this?
Okay, then put may if you want.
I, I'm fine with this.
I am too.
Then, you know, let's just not have employee handbook and let everybody do.
That's all I have. Well, anything on page three, seniority?
No.
2.6, page four. Well, they're missing where it is in 2.6.1. The department head, and I would say in conjunction with the town board liaison will complete performance appraisal.
Well, the evaluation procedure has that.
The what?
The evaluation procedure has the liaison in it.
What section you're talking about?
2.6.3.
The department head will complete thereafter, department head and the department liaison will meet with the employee to review, but it doesn't say who completes it, so if it's just the department head completing it, why then bring in liaison afterwards, talk about just what the department head, I think both of them auto do the performance appraisal form. So I would add an apartment head in conjunction with town board liaison will complete thereafter. Both.
I wouldn't.
What?
I wouldn't because it's the managerial responsibility to do the evaluation. The other person is there to, you know, the liaison is there to support the employee and the supervisor or the management.
To bring business to the town board.
Right, but by having, you're diluting the responsibility and accountability of the supervisory employee when you say that the liaison is part of this.
But a lot of the supervisory employee is going to be the supervisor. So say the CEO, the building inspector, who's going to fill out that appraisal?
Supervisor.
And the liaison shouldn't have any role in filling that out?
I don't think so.
Then why don't we take out the liaison as in the second sentence? Why should the liaison be part of it?
Because liaison is there to prevent, you're supposed to phrase it positively for support and guidance and communication, but it's also there to diffuse any potential situation.
In theory, the liaison should have the most contact with the.
Supervisory employee.
With the supervisory employee and not the supervisor.
And why did you make the supervisor the head of?
Because I needed somebody if somebody doesn't show up that day. If you want, we could make the liaison the head. The theory of Richardson is you're better off with somebody who is around the town board most of the time. So if somebody is sick and they have to go home and you have to juggle who's going to cover that desk.
I agree with Bruce. I mean, you know, we don't, if we're going to have a process.
In the summer programs in rec historically, they've given everybody, even though they're seasonal employees, two evaluations, one mid-season and one at the end.
Right.
If we were going to continue doing that, I'd be hard-pressed to see the liaison know what the second counselor on the second grade group is doing.
So then the liaison would say, I have no input in it, but if the liaison feels they want to say something in that evaluation form, seems to me they should have a right to do it.
Well, then the evaluation process should be that the, whoever's responsible preparing it pulls stakeholders or pulls customers. That's the way you would do that.
Well, you want to say in the first sentence, department head will complete the performance appraisal form prior to meeting after taking input from other interested parties.
Thank you.
Did you find the other one?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Which number is this again? This is.
Department head will complete the appraisal form prior to meeting with the employee and I would suggest after taking input from other relevant parties.
If there are other relevant parties.
Yeah.
This gets really loaded.
You know, I think it's fine as it is because the meeting is with the. You know, I think it's fine as it is, because the meeting is with the department head and the liaison, and that can be a matter of record too.
No, but it's.
I, I would like to leave it just as it is.
So then after the meeting, there could be a revised appraisal? Because what you've done is you've cut out the liaison completely.
Let's just ask Richardson why. Bruce, what do you think?
Then I think we should go back to the old system and get rid of liaisons. I don't want to be a liaison if I have no input.
It's not for input, it's to bring business to the town board. We're talking about who's the head of the department, and I don't think that that's a liaison.
I'm saying a liaison will have relevant information, and what you've done is you've cut out any input by the liaison that goes, that goes in the personnel file.
I think we're fine with this, Bruce, and I, let's ask Richardson why.
Bruce, you still fine with it?
Yeah.
I'm not asking Richardson. Maybe you'll ask Richardson. I can't ask him all these questions.
Well, then we can have him come to a meeting, and he can answer it for us.
We can go to Nicaragua.
Yeah.
We could drive a truck down.
Sure.
Okay, personnel file.
I mean, we could, we could even add something in here. There's an employee reply. We could certainly add a liaison or any other records, you know, to this.
So the liaison does his own.
I don't know. Let's ask Richardson why it's like this. Okay, personnel file. I'm fine with this.
Just the location. Are you fine with the location?
Yeah, I have a question.
I don't think it should be. I think it should be kept in the bookkeeper's office.
Is the bookkeeper acknowledged anywhere officially as the human resources person?
No.
And how do you do that with, again, as you pointed out before, you have departments of one all over the place? You've got off-site departments, like what personnel files should I be keeping versus sending down originals for other things? I mean, it's just a little, we have, we have different locations. We have cemetery, we have highway, we have town hall, are really the three primary locations. Bobby has supposedly records somewhere. I have nowhere. I have no idea where. So.
You keep your own personnel files?
I do, but it's weird. The bookkeeper's office has some of these that are named in section 27.1. And I have some as well, like letters of acclamation or something, or.
I think they should all be kept in the bookkeeper's office.
So every time something comes in, I have to bring them down? Whether it comes in an email form or. And this could get, I'm just trying to.
I know, I know, but.
I don't want to be a problem, not your major.
I know. Bruce, what do you think?
I, I don't know what to think. I mean, it's kind of weird mishmash now. I think that there are some things that are appropriate, anything that have to do with payroll and employment status, which need to be basically in whatever you're human resources, which is probably linked to your payroll department, so it makes sense in the bookkeeper's office. But the other things, I think it makes sense to be kept with the department head.
I think the department head can keep stuff, but a copy. But I think you want to gather it all in one place.
You, if, if you reprimand somebody for some reason, you write it up, you stick it in the personnel file. You don't want that in the bookkeeper's office.
That's exactly where, that's, that's exactly where my mind was.
You, you want that with the supervisor. You want one central file that's got key sensitive stuff in it.
Well, maybe then it's, it's kept in the supervisor's office.
But we don't, but what about applications, withholding forms, immigration forms, retirement enrollments?
That all needs to go to your payroll services person, which is currently in the bookkeeper's office. So I think you just need a way of like either separating what's where, or saying will be found in either this location or that location, or a combination of both. I think that's probably what covers you.
There's nothing wrong with having copies in different places.
Right.
But there's always supposed to be one central file.
Right.
And the central file, I think, the way this is saying it, should be in the supervisor's office. The copies, you can, you can have payroll copies, you can have immigration, whatever you want, any place that needs it. And then, then, you know, at the end of 2015, you throw out the stuff that's replaced this year, and that's your master copy. Payroll, or the bookkeeper may keep stuff for the last eight years. But all you care about, what, what is current with that employee now?
You're now, you now think that also applies to disciplining, even if it's an informal memo? Like if I've done, let's just hypothetically say that I did a memo of someone's behavior, that I spoke to them about it, but it's not a formal counseling memo. Copies of that should go down.
Well, what, what I meant was, if they're withholding, that kind of stuff changes.
Yeah, yeah, that should be in bookkeeper. I agree with you. But this is looking everything together, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I, and I still think there should, I, I think all personnel-related issues, evaluations, everything else should be in that, in this file.
Okay, so the person emails down, hey, you know, Bob Roush did a great job on Grinnell Street, you know, in the snow. That should go down to the bookkeeper's office?
No, that should go into, if, if you, as the supervisor. Believe that that should go into his personnel file, then it should say in here that all communications go into the personnel file.
Right, but it doesn't say that at the moment.
Right, and, and so what I, where I was going with it was, what's the critical, common stuff that you need on every employee?
Right. I think we need to separate this into two sections of information, is what I'm saying.
I think it all should go into the personnel file. If you send a memo, Bob Roush, or Mr. X did a great job. I think that should go in the central file, just as Mr. X did a terrible job, and he ought to be fired. The good stuff should go in as well as the bad stuff.
The difference, the difference is that there was a, a decision made by a town official or a town employee in, in some of this. This other stuff could be solicited by who knows where. There could be somebody out there that doesn't like Bob.
Right.
And, and they could be sending in nasty grams all the time.
That is correct.
No, I'm not saying that, but if the department head or a town official writes something, that should go in the personnel file. If Cat, if the highway superintendent writes something, a, the head of maintenance did me a favor, and he did a great job on something, he volunteered. I think that should go in the personnel file.
What if I write back to Mr. and Mrs. XYZ, thank you so much for your kind remarks, you know, and I pass that on to the employees. We value that.
Yeah, I don't think that has to go. I think it's really.
But this is saying that does. So what I'm saying is you need to clarify language. That's my point.
Which sentence, which sentence says that, Kathy?
You've got content in number 271. Says letters of acclamation.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take that out. Records maintained included.
But then in number two, it's saying all of this needs to be in the supervisor's office. That's what I'm pointing out. You're all agreeing that there's a difference in this type of information, but the written word on the page is lumping it all together and putting it all in one place. So what you think and what this represents are two different things.
You know, the, all of these records are currently kept in the bookkeeper's office. I think we are missing an acknowledgement of the bookkeeper as the HR person. And I don't know why we're changing this to.
Even notices.
Well, it's, it's accountability. If, if information is shared that shouldn't be shared, then you're accountable. If information is shared that shouldn't be shared, and it's not in your files, you're still accountable. But you have no, no way to, to do anything about it. That, like immigration. When I, when I had, I had companies with, they would hire illegal aliens, and they would not, the labor consultants told them not to keep the immigration forms, to, to just look at them, see that they're check off, that it was like that, and.
You sign the I-9 affidavit.
Yeah, yeah, but you don't keep a file of it. You just, you just note that you saw it. And that seems so illegal to me. But that, that's the way they were doing. I can understand why he's saying that they should be separate files, but I think we should keep them, and we should check that stuff. I, I, I think it's fine the way it is. I just don't think it's the way we do it.
No, it's not the way.
Yeah, I think we, I agree with Bruce on this. And in one, why don't we take out letters of accommodation?
We're need, we're gonna need to buy a locking file cabinet.
Yeah, I think you're right, so that it's really. I would actually just change it to say formal disciplinary and grievance notices, and take out letters of acclamation.
Take out letters. I don't think it's just formal.
Well, as I said, if I write a memo to the files, I know and have it, but it's not, you know, like, let's say I, somebody does something, I spoke to them about it, it's informal, I want to document that for the files so that I know that I spoke to them about it in the past, and I can always go back and say, hey, we spoke about this on blah, 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 but it's not a formal counseling session. That, that is real world example. That happens. I have files full of that stuff.
Right, right, but say if at some point you want to fire somebody. Or, I don't know if you have the right to fire somebody. Assuming you had the right to fire somebody under the union contract, and I don't know whether you have that right. And they subpoena the personnel file. Well, that's not part of the personnel file. Shouldn't that get into? You know, for your own protection? You know, if, if it's no big deal, then go write something.
No, no.
No, that doesn't work in the real world with that. You have to be able to say.
I haven't.
You know, we spoke about this.
I've been asking, and we haven't received notice.
What's the word used? You know, steps of procedures that follow. It's in, there's a certain word for it. Bruce, what's the word for discipline? What's that word?
Increasing levels.
Yeah.
Lashings. Lashings, floggings.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But again, it gets lost if it's not in there, and.
But the formal stuff would be in there, and you can't use the informal stuff.
I, I'm fine with the formal stuff, really. I think Bruce had a good point.
Which way are you agreeing, Elizabeth? I'm not sure. You, you put everything in?
No, that it, it should be, just be formal. From a town board member, from a department head. The other stuff is incidental.
No, but Kathy is saying she wants to write informal disciplinary things.
It's a metal to the file. It's different.
But that would be a form, that would be formal, because you're, you're the department head.
But if it's a, right, that's, when I, when I said the word formal, I'm using it to insert formal disciplinary and grievance.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
As opposed to an informal, which is.
Which is unsolicited from a member of the public. You were right with that?
No, because I'm confused. You're saying different things. You're saying if a member of the public doesn't go in, that's fine. We all agree to that. Question is, if the department head writes something, can the department head decide whether it's formal or informal? I, I don't know what that distinction is, so.
Well, you have a definition of that, though, under your disciplinary section. There are things that need to be filed. That would define what the formal disciplinary documents are.
See, your problem is, I think, that you're worried that if you don't want to fire somebody, but you want to try to get them in line. And you write something, it's more effective, but the fact that you're, that it, that a copy of your memo goes into the personnel file doesn't mean that the person is fired, doesn't mean anything unless it rises to the level where you want to do something. But why should that get lost, that document?
It doesn't get lost. It's just in a file there, as opposed to sitting in the bookkeeper's office.
Yeah, up there, but again, is it gonna be found? Is anybody gonna remember?
To use a real world example.
What?
To use a real world example, there's a case in which we had disciplinary action against somebody in the town, and that led to that person, that person ended up being terminated. In the hearing for that, leading to that, at which I was a witness, the file, the informal things could be referred to for establishing patterns of behavior, but the formal notices, you still had to have like three formal, you know, sessions, disciplinary notices, you know, to bring it up to the point of, okay, this is the third, this is the last draw, this is, you know. I mean, there were, this is, this is, this is why I'm trying to say, real world. But the other stuff was allowed in, but it wasn't allowed in at the level of that it was being counted as counseling memos.
But again, it gets lost if it doesn't go into one file. That's what I think.
Well, I think we, I agree with you on that, I think.
Okay, so let's not make a distinction. We're taking out letters of acclamation. Now, we're gonna keep it in the supervisor's office, or.
Let's start this and make sure that we can, and we have the room.
Okay. What, where does Shelley, shall we keep it in a locked file?
Yes.
You want a balance?
I'm sorry, what, Bruce?
You, you want positive and negative? You want a balance?
See, I, yes. Why don't we take out in supervisor's office, assuming it's a locked cabinet in Shelley's office, you could say the original personnel records for current employees will be kept, will be maintained and controlled by the town supervisor. I don't think we have to specify.
I don't remember, is HIPAA in here?
Physically where?
Is HIPAA in here?
What?
It says health insurance, employment wave reforms.
That's not HIPAA protected.
There's nothing in here that's.
Nothing in here.
So what I'm suggesting in the first sentence, take out, will, will, will be, take out the words kept in the supervisor's office, and just say will be maintained and controlled by this supervisor.
That's fine.
Okay, all immigration.
So access will be then maintained and controlled by the supervisor.
Well, and realize that the bookkeeper is appointed by the supervisor.
Not the same thing?
So we have to change this, the way it's handled.
Yeah, if you change where it is, then you gotta change accessing.
This isn't how you're functioning now anyway.
We realize that.
Because it's saying that you're gonna have a separate locked file.
We, we realize that. Let's just review this.
So what are you, getting rid of the last sentence?
I think we need to review this with Shelley and make sure that we can comfortably change it. We're gonna take out the first, kept in the supervisor's office. We're gonna say maintained and controlled by the town supervisor.
I think you need Shelley's input on that entire section.
It does.
I think we need Shelley's input on the whole thing.
Yeah.
And at least once we get a draft that we're comfortable with, I think we gotta vet it with everybody.
You just, you just have to make sure that, however you do it, that the person is accountable. There's somebody accountable for everything. There's somebody accountable for everything. That's the key with this.
So you're saying we don't keep the substance testing records in a separate file? So let me put a bracket around all employee and... Is it any big deal to keep it all in one file?
No, that's how it is.
Well, that's HIPAA.
That's the way we keep it, no?
I believe. I mean, I'm not, you know, I don't have no...
We're going to get Shelley's, we're getting Shelley's input on this. I've just circled this all. I'll talk to her about it. If we want to talk to her about it together, we can do that. And then I've circled this whole location, access. It's fine.
Two, seven, four, anything you have before that?
It's fine. Unless highway, you know, supervisor.
Yeah, see, I don't know what the word unrestricted is. I would take out that, I don't know what, an employee shouldn't have access to attorney work product, confidential memorandum.
Which word would you take out?
Unrestricted.
It says it may not have unrestricted access.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, may not have unrestricted access. But they shouldn't have access at all.
I believe they have the right to.
They do.
Not to attorney work product.
Not employee, no.
Well, it says, well, not, does not have unrestricted. Some things are attorney-client privilege and...
This says they have access, but it wouldn't be restricted. I mean, I think this wording is fine.
Well, that implies they have access. May not have acc...
They do.
They don't have unrestricted access.
They may not have access.
I'm fine with this unless you guys...
Well, I would move the unrestricted to maybe confidential memorandum, letters of reference, and unsolicited complaints. And you protect attorney work product.
I think they do.
They have the right to that. It's just not, they don't have the right to immediate access to it. They have the right to say, did anybody write a letter?
I'm talking about attorney work product.
Yes, so then separate that. You said the whole sentence.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. Let's move the unrestricted to confidential memorandums, letters of reference, and unsolicited complaints.
But, okay, Joe, there are times that you may want the employee to have access to attorney work product. And that's why it says restricted, because it believed that under attorney work product, the, you know, is, is the product is given over to whoever. Me if I ask for a memo on something, you if you ask for a memo on something. You may decide that you want to share that.
Yeah, you could. Okay, leave it alone. Okay, two, eight. I would add in two, eight, one, that discredits the town or its elected officials. So it should read, "Any conduct that interferes with the operation that discredits the town or its elected officials, or that's offensive to the residents, will not be tolerated."
We are the town.
Yeah, I think that's redundant, and I'll just leave it.
Then I'm over to page seven, two, nine, two. Does anybody have anything before then?
Nope.
Oh, and there's a term, progressive discipline, by the way.
There you go.
Unauthorized expenditure of town funds, per se, violated. I think you need kind of intentional unauthorized or no, some kind of, or knowing.
I'm sorry, where?
Second to the last bullet. Thing that says no. Mistakes are made.
Well, then we wouldn't...
Well, these are per se violations. I would say, knowing expenditure of unauthorized town funds.
You're legal gambling. Is there legal gambling?
Well, it does, it says while on duty, so if you're on break or lunch.
Football pool.
There go those football pools.
But it says while on duty.
Well, I think while on duty, we have a, thinking about football pools. Are they illegal football pools?
So it's knowing expenditure of town funds?
I'm fine with unauthorized.
Flat? Because sometimes, you know, people will spend some money, they didn't get a, all the bids, they spent $2 to buy lunch for themselves. You know, I think it's too, I think it's too severe.
Well, we sign off on it, it's authorized.
Well, no, this is, this is done before, I think.
I agree. Intent is, who knows what the intent is.
Bruce, what do you think?
I'm happy the way it is.
Okay.
I'm ecstatic.
Believe we're gambling while on duty. Okay.
Okay, anything, have anything else on that page?
No.
Page eight.
Sleeping on the job.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Well, we have people who are plowing for 24 hours at a stretch, and I guess that's not misconduct, that's approved.
Sleeping on a job without permission. No, because that is, you may want to tell somebody here who's got a stomach ache.
Take a nap.
Go lay down for an hour and then come back. Right?
But maybe that's not sleeping on the job, that's a break.
But again, all of these, the preface to all of this is, they're illustrative.
Leave it, then, you think?
Yeah.
Why not put without permission after sleeping on the job, since we know that there's...
Everything in it.
Two point...
Page eight. Sleeping on the job.
One, two, three, four, five, six, four. Without supervisor's permission.
This is illustrative and not intended to limit the town's right to impose discipline in other appropriate cases. Leave it, because I think that says that you as a supervisor know that your guys are taking four-hour sleep rates in the middle of a blizzard. Of course, that's not a disciplinary action.
But that's not what that sentence means. That sentence means this is illustrative and there could be other things addition to this. That's what that sentence means.
Nobody sleeps on a job when it's paid.
Yeah, you're right. Sleeping on the job is an infraction. An approved break is not sleeping on the job. Yeah, I agree, it's not sleeping on the job. I'll believe it.
So we're leaving it?
I would.
Okay.
Can you attach the code of ethics?
Hey, then I'm over to part three, page three. Does anybody have anything before then?
No.
Three, four, one.
This is something that Shelley and Kim have to do something with, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Which part of it, Bruce?
Time records.
Normal hours of operation?
No, three point four, one.
We're on three point two.
Oh, I jumped way ahead.
No, I'm on three, four, one. You have something on three, those pages?
All right, you're fine with emergency closing procedures. I've done that this winter.
Yeah.
Got a couple of snow emergencies.
Don't have anything till three, four.
My only point with three, four was that Shelley and Kim need to look at that before we finalize it.
Yeah, let's get input.
Time records must be completed by the close of each workday. Is that?
Well, because they clock out.
They should, yeah, but say somebody goes home.
There's a procedure for that. If they forget to clock out, it's signed off on.
This is it. Employees must complete their own time records. I would say punch their own time records.
No, they are, they do a time sheet. They complete time sheets, not just punch.
Let's just leave it.
But in your department, don't they punch also?
Everybody, everybody punches in and out.
Everybody punches, but they also complete a time sheet.
They fill in their in and outs and sign them.
Yes, and which also, because there is other documentation that goes with those sheets as well, such as requests for time off.
Punching is just one, one aspect of the time sheet.
You don't want to just say punch, because...
Then they're not doing everything else they need to do to pay. So just leave this is correct.
Now, time records must be submitted to the department head.
Wait a second, excuse me, before that. This says employees in the recreation and highway departments must punch a time card. But you guys have other departments that are punching.
What number are you, what number are you...
Three, four, one, second sentence.
Aren't all employees punching now?
Yes.
So that should be changed. Just, what is it, hourly employees?
Where, I don't, which bullet point?
I mean, three point four point one, second sentence.
You're saying it's unnecessary?
No, it says that only...
Oh, it should be, all employees must punch a time card.
All hourly employees, again.
All employees.
No, not all, you don't.
Clerks punch in and out, everybody punches in and out. It's all employees.
I thought it was only hourly workers.
No.
Well, it used to be. But then you want to know whether people are really here or not.
So I'm taking out recreation, highway department.
It just should say, all employees must punch a time card.
I think before we had a discussion of whether, yeah, the exclusion from definition of employee elected officials.
Right, we want to clarify that.
Right, but you don't want elected officials having to do time clocks, because we work at home often. So that's a reason why you would want to keep elected officials out of that definition.
Okay, I have nothing else on this. Do you guys on this page?
Well, time records must be submitted to the department head. I would say department head or bookkeeper.
Bookkeeper can't certify the payroll.
Uh, yeah, but she prepares some...
Their, all records are submitted to me when I sign off on payroll.
You're certifying the payroll?
I do.
Except for highway, I'm certifying, right?
Go through this.
So it goes to you?
Yeah, you know, it comes to me and I spot check it. Occasionally, I check the whole thing. And I even check highway, which is submitted to me, too.
So, but the point with this is that, like, if, let's take rec. If we had a rec director, the lifeguards would put in there.
Rec director should be...
Certify.
And then I should be.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think I have to certify payroll. I think they should be checking. I spot check and certify.
It's a difference between certifying payroll and certifying the hours worked. They're delineated in here, so...
I think they have to certify hours worked.
So we need department head in here?
Yeah.
Okay. Did I answer your question, Joe?
Yeah. For things in town hall, supervisor would be the department head.
Well, not necessarily. We go back to the beginning of this, and we have questions about who's the department head. You know, we have to...
Well, I'm assuming that it has to be the supervisor.
Okay.
For like a one-person department, and I don't know what we do about maintenance. See, again, on three, four, four, again, it's department head we're talking about. So I think that has to flow through the supervisor. Okay, I go over to, unless somebody has something to, three, eight, one.
What about expense reimbursement? There's no...
Where is that?
Three point five.
Yeah, I...
This is saying that the town board has to approve requests for education, any employee or elected official.
Which section are you reading?
Education and training.
Well, only if you're asking for reimbursement.
Well, like going to the Association of Towns meeting? Because I think, like, some of you were there this week, right? So the training, the fee for that, whatever, how did that get approved?
Doesn't. I pay for it. Alan pays for it out of a one pocket. We don't hit the town for that.
The town should be paying for it.
No.
Yes, town should be paying for it, I agree. When I go up to Cornell, right?
That may be, you can put it in.
I do.
But if I choose not to put it in...
You don't have to put it in. Alan's not making you put it in.
So I'm just saying, an employee will be reimbursed for training that are directly related. If the employee isn't asking for any money, then you don't have to go to the town board. Employee wants training.
So this doesn't change the process? I mean, I go up there, you know, PO is in, it's in the system, eventually a voucher shows up. But that's still tied up in the fact.
Well, but must first seek approval from department head.
That's some of the problem, right, that first seat.
Well, we're required to have an authorized purchaser list. Has to be updated by annual, by any...
What has to be, you're saying?
The authorized purchaser list.
Right.
Every couple of years, it's got to be updated.
Right.
And so...
They both are.
If somebody, if somebody who isn't on the list buys something, because they wanted to buy something, then that becomes a gray area. If somebody's on the list, then we've already authorized what they, you know, what they're allowed to do.
Well, that's what I want to make sure of, that this doesn't controvert, you know, that.
Let's check that.
I don't think that list is even included in this. I don't think it was considered.
It should probably, it should probably be, an addendum, right?
But add authorized purchaser list?
Include authorized purchaser list.
Yeah, and there's a town law, I forget what it is, but it's 109, I think, 109D or something like that.
Well, do we want everything, all expenses for training to run prior approval by the town board?
I would say we do, if we're budgeting for it.
Well, if you budgeted it, I mean, if there's money, for example, to go to Ithaca, we all know, I go up there every year, right? So that's, it's, we consider that's in the budget. You have, there's a training, there's a line for that, that's utilized for that. And I'm the authorized purchaser and approver on that line.
But the fact that we throw it in the budget, who remembers at the time?
No, that's only part of it.
Let me try to finish the sentence. And I'm not talking about that. There's been other departments of training, whether it's worthwhile or not, whether it's necessary to send two people to the Association of Towns, where we're paying, where we're paying for it. Do we want control over that?
Well, again, I think that goes back to the authorized purchaser and approver.
Who remembers at the time?
Well, that's why you attach it.
What?
That's why you attach it to this, right?
No, but attach the authorized thing, but... Why don't we take a bathroom break?
We left off on education and training. Are we fine as is? Do we want to look at the authorized purchasing list?
No, I don't want to look at the authorized purchasing list.
What do you want to do?
I would keep it as is or take out the first part?
Okay, leave it as is?
Well, wait a minute. Again, this goes back to...
Hold on, Kathy, we're pulling them to see what they...
Oh, sorry.
I'm okay with it, but I think we should have an education plan for each employee.
I don't want to limit education.
Yeah, I just think, you know...
Not that many people take advantage of it.
But they probably should. We'd probably be better off.
Well, there's, I think there's a culture here. It happened several years back, where people were discouraged from, you know, going.
I think people do go. You know, I see the building inspector putting in for things, CEO, uh... I know, planning board member goes every year to something.
They have to go. It's statutorily required that they attend education.
The assessors go, so I don't think people are not going to things.
Kathy, what were you going to say?
It's a matter of like if I decide that there's time in our schedule that allows, and next week there was a flagging tutorial being offered by the Association of Towns of Cornell in another county, I want to be able to send my crew members to that without going through this rule. As the department had an elected official charged with that, I believe that that's my responsibility and my authority. And I think, again, this supplements that. And I don't think you're in a place to know who, as a board, who needs what training there or when is appropriate. I don't think those are, you know, or whether, you know, the secretary in some department needs a refresher course on Excel or something, you know, or, you know, I mean, these are things that... It seems a very cumbersome way of going about getting appropriate training for the people who work at town for the town.
Yeah, I...
Yes?
I kind of agree with Kathy. I see two issues here. One of them is if we budgeted it...
It's, we're going to spend it. We're willing.
And the other one is absence.
So why don't we make it upon proper authorization of the department head?
Let's just take out, before the request is presented to the town board.
No, but you're keeping upon proper authorization of the town board?
Right, and proper authorization could mean that it's in the budget if someone's allowed to spend the money.
I don't know if that's, why don't we just say upon proper authorization by the department head, leave it to the department head?
Okay. Bruce?
Okay, good then.
Kathy, is it?
Yeah, I think that's, we need some more sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, you know, mileage, we don't establish a mileage rate. We go by the state's mileage rate. Or the federal mile, we do...
Actually, you should probably be adopting that at your annual meeting here.
We should.
And then that, this would then be appropriate language.
You all right with that?
Yeah, we used to do that. I don't know what...
It's not on the list.
So we're keeping it as is?
Yeah, and we have to remember to adopt it at our...
Throw that off.
Pre-ord. But we haven't approved this.
I have a question on the education and training thing.
Yes.
This is an employee, a member of a collective bargaining unit, is not covered by or eligible for this education and training provision.
What does it say?
Just for an example, you know, these new trucks are all electronic and stuff like that. What if Bobby needs to get training on a computer for these trucks?
I think that may be covered in the, uh... Other manual. I'll have to check that. But yeah, you're right. There should be education and training for that too.
Yeah, I think that that, it's actually, um...
Let me ask if it's covered elsewhere.
Why do you have section 3.53? It's covered under section 3.51, which we just fixed. I don't think you need section 3.53, because the policy statement says training specifically in 3.5.1.
Well, I want to leave this in until we take it out. If we, collective bargaining unit...
Well, again, this one then though, Dr. Patel, but under proper authorization, again, this should probably be of the department head, not the town board then, again. To make a good run.
I think we changed that to department head.
You changed it in 3.51, not in 3.53.
I was talking about, I was talking about 3.53 when I said that.
You should change them both. And then I think that that last sentence should come out.
I don't.
Not covered by this.
Which, what section are you talking about, the last sentence in what section?
3.53.
Yeah, I'm going to ask.
We're going to ask about that.
Is it covered someplace else?
Okay, moving. Can we move on? Vehicle usage policy?
Uh, I'm up to 3.8.
Well, use of vehicle for town business, use of personal vehicle for town business. An employee who drives a personal vehicle to conduct town business must have auto liability insurance. Why isn't the town, why isn't the town policy covering non-owned auto, personal auto for town business?
What section are you in?
3.72. I'm going to ask our insurance people about that.
Uh, since it's a personal vehicle.
Right, I think that's what that's, it's your own car you're driving.
But if we're driving our own car for town business, why isn't the town insurance subjugated for that?
I don't know if it's covered.
Well, that's what I want to find out.
Okay, ask. We're not making a change yet.
Well, you wouldn't be eligible for reimbursement then.
What? You would be.
Uh, okay, so you'd be re, so the portion of my personal use of my vehicles, the town is going for the insurance that I'm required to have, the town's going to reimburse?
Submit your insurance to the town now?
I don't know.
Saying that you have to submit proof of insurance. I just want to talk to NYMR and see what their guidelines are for these.
I drive my own car to Ithaca every year, you know, because I don't want to take my town truck out of, you know, circulation. I don't have enough, especially in the small ones, for that. So I don't know how this affects that.
I don't either. Um, do town employees pay the cost of traffic or parking tickets now?
I believe they do. If you get a ticket as a driver for your action, you know, you're liable for that action, right, not the town.
Fine with this then.
Okay, 3.8.
Driver's license.
In that new stuff that he's putting in, again, I would say driving it may be checked. And instead of are checked, thereafter, the town may conduct.
Which, where is this, Joe?
The new stuff that's underlined, second line, part of job duties, instead of are checked, may be checked.
You can't check. I've tried. It for, this is, actually, you're putting in something here that is really not possible to do. I called like Sergeant Dunn to say, can you help me have an applicant that we're considering for employment? I'd like to check the driver record. They can't run a motor vehicle check. We don't have a way of doing that that I'm aware of. I think this is something that's, I don't, I don't know how to...
Well, but you could add, the employee can get it, right, for himself. So you could ask the employee to produce it.
That's what NYMR told us.
This says thereafter, the town conducts motor vehicle records checks on a regular basis.
Well, again, I would say maybe.
The only thing I do to comply with that now, I mean, this is new language, but is, you know, we pull, we have all the employees that are driving town vehicles, and I suggest that you guys start doing this as well beyond the highway. Get a current copy of their license. We get their license, physically see the license, that it's not been taken away, that there's no restriction that's been added or anything, and take a photocopy of it for the file, and date photocopy. And the previous photocopies can be, you know, discarded.
This is a very important thing.
It is.
We, we had the highway department, before Kathy was there, we had a guy that was, lost his license, and then he come forward and say that he lost his license. So he was driving a town truck with no license.
But we don't seem to be able to have any control over that because...
We need to find a way to get control of that.
All right.
According to NYMR.
Kathy, we're finding out about that, why I instituted a license.
We're going to check with NYMR.
Well, I'm at, it was Josh, whatever his name was.
Josh Albon, Albon.
But I think they're supposed to report any violations or anything to the supervisor within 48 hours. What a commercial driver's license.
All right, so we need to...
Okay, so somebody's going to get back to the Richardson on this?
No, I think Richardson should check for us.
Check what? With NYMR?
Yeah.
How much is that going to cost you?
Yeah, why can't, why shouldn't you do it?
Why should I do it?
Because you're the supervisor. You get up the big bucks.
We're paying him to do the employee handbook.
Yeah, but you, you don't want him running for it.
Josh told us was that individuals can get it from DMV. They go into DMV and they say, give me my, my record. And then you can request a copy of it. You have to do that every year. You have to give them the time and whatever expense it is to do that.
That's what I'm saying. If you just make it maybe, then it can be enforced.
There's a bigger issue here. It's the highway department just brought up. How are we making it mandatory?
How are we supposed to know if somebody loses their license and they don't come forward and say, hey, I lost my license?
We need a mechanism for that.
You need, you need something there that they're going to say, hey, this guy lost his license. He shouldn't be driving the truck.
Oh, so thereafter, the town may conduct motor vehicle record checks. It's Kathy can ask the people periodically to show me your driving record. Get it from DMV.
And then again, you...
Twenty-five dollar, that's twenty-five, that's twenty-five dollars to get one.
Well, I mean, if your, if your employment is mandated on you having a valid driver's license.
Yes.
And then you got to pay the fee and submit it.
This individual never came forward, said he lost his license. I think it just turned into a big liability in front of town.
Okay. Telephone, 3.9.
Am I missing a word? I'm sorry. There's a word missing in 3.8.3.
It's just a B.
The word B.
Yeah.
Last set.
Yeah, I, I have it. 3.9, the fourth paragraph. The call must be returned to the line. Familiarly, the firm that the call is being monitored rather than transferred. Because the person's on hold, so it's not a transfer, but being monitored. Then the next paragraph, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, but this is not, doesn't happen. You call somebody and you get a message, leave a message.
It says, or an answering device. We have an answering device inherent in our system. I think it's fine. I think long-distance calls can be taken out. Sounds like coming from the days where there was, you know, the 70s when it was an...
I'm sorry, where are you taking?
I think an employee must, may not make personal long-distance calls except in an emergency. The employee must reimburse the town for the cost of the call. I think we can take that out because it's all... It's all at one rate, so I think...
Well, you're taking out just the second sentence, not the first?
I would take the whole thing out. It's, it seems like it's anachronistic. Long-distance calls aren't billed differently any longer.
So is this a billing thing, or is this a thing that people shouldn't?
I think we can take it out. I think the preceding paragraph addresses it. I don't think there's an issue with long-distance calls.
Okay.
Bruce?
Question is, do we want to add something, uh... On the town provided cellphone, that the employee, if they get one, should have the least expensive, expensive plan?
It's all done through the town. Shelley shops it out and it's on contract. Plan is on contract.
And the least expensive may not be appropriate.
Yeah, I think, I think we're...
Capability for texting pictures.
I think we're fine.
What this doesn't cover is personal, you know, using your own cellphone on town time. That's not covered in here, that I said.
Yeah, which can turn into a big problem.
Correct. And we had, I had to institute a policy about cellphone usage and about plectrions for fire department calls and things like that as well. You know, those things, that should be addressed. You know, this only addresses using a town cellphone. If you're off on your own cellphone, it's an issue.
What's the issue?
If they're taking personal calls on town time, or making personal calls, taking or making.
Give me more words, because I don't understand what you're saying.
You have a cellphone on your own, correct? Your own cellphone?
My own personal cellphone.
Correct. So if you on your own personal cellphone, let's say you're, you know, on the clock here theoretically, but you, you're keep making calls or accepting calls on your cellphone. Isn't that a problem?
What is the problem?
Personal calls on town time.
Personal calls on company time.
You're taking a break.
Well, it says, an employee shall not make personal, may not take personal calls.
It's in there.
It's, I thought it said only on the town cellphone.
No, it doesn't. It's the preceding paragraph. I think we're fine with this. I'm fine with moving on. Anybody else?
Let's see that.
K in three ten two, it talks about office of the town supervisor. There is no office. Employee receives verbal complaint. Town resident unfair, must immediately notify the town supervisor.
It's fine.
So take out office of.
I don't see office of. Oh, on two.
Three ten two.
Or is it the department head? You know, because again...
It's confusing. Hold on. I think it should be the same thing. Verbal and written should be the same thing. There's an inconsistency between three ten one and three ten two.
But verbal says town supervisor.
Can you please, I'm trying to, yeah. I just think they should say the same thing.
Fine, now what should they say? Is it just the department head or...
And forward to the supervisor.
Should it be forwarded to the supervisor?
Yeah, I think so. They're keeping the records there.
So if somebody says, again, my mailbox got clipped, you wanna know about that every time?
Sure. If you get a written communication.
I'm not gonna tell you every time. That's just absolutely ridiculous, and then you're gonna have to build another two hours into, you know, the day after it's supposed to inform you. If somebody is complaining about, you know, I'm just trying to be realistic here.
I think the difference between the two is the written one, you have something physical that you can pass on. The verbal one is, is, could be hearsay and, you know, the old telephone game where things get changed. So I, I think that's why you just wanna forward on verbal things directly to the supervisor.
Hold on, you're saying verbal should go to the supervisor, but written, no? Isn't the opposite?
Well...
That if it's written?
If, if I, if, if one of these bobs receives a written thing, it's because, probably because of the highway. So they wanna keep Kathy informed, so they would pass it through that way. That's the chain of command.
Right, but should it go further than Kathy?
Well...
On written?
You, you want the town supervisor to know that there's an issue out there.
I think so.
And if it's verbal, somebody could be complaining about the assessors.
Okay, so if it's just verbal, does it just go to the department head again to supervise?
No, no, because the department head may not have any authority with it whatsoever.
Well, I'm saying the department head's probably gonna be the supervisor for a lot of...
But it's, but you can't assume that.
I'm gonna take a break. Does anybody wanna order any soup or anything? Clerks about?
No, let's, I, are you going to two o'clock? Is that the plan?
Right. The clerks are bringing lunch in. Would you like to order anything?
No, let's see if we can actually do an hour of work.
Right along.
Um...
Right along.
So on verbal? We should say, notify the department head?
No.
Also for verbal? Why not? Why should that just go?
Because then you're, in the written one, you're passing it to the, the department head to pass on to the supervisor.
Right.
You have a, an audit trail. Verbal, Bob could tell Kathy, and Kathy could say, oh, I don't know anything about assessors. I'm not gonna do anything with that. It's done. And, and the complaint never got to the supervisor.
But take her thing about they clipped the mailbox.
That, but that's because it's written?
No, it's oral. Written, I'm fine with.
You're never gonna get everything.
What?
You're never gonna get everything.
Right, but what should the instruction be on verbal communications? Is that? And how does that go to the supervisor?
Supervisor?
Somebody has to call the super, the supervisor? The department has to call the supervisor?
I, I don't know. The, the whole thing's...
I would just say notify the department.
It's Big Brother is what it is.
What?
The whole thing's Big Brother.
I think you should really revisit the section.
I think we could just take out the verbal communication. Just leave written communication. We're small enough here. Everybody knows everything.
So take out...
Kathy gets called. I, I'd take a, you know, if someone want, is upset enough, they'll put it in writing and forward it to us. If it's...
Gee, the mobile's gonna close. The mobile's gonna close.
So we're over to, we're over to three, three eleven, three twelve?
Our informal personnel compliance department.
Actually, that's where we should keep all the official records. Richie's back room.
I, I now figure out what time is it safe to go to the mobile. And, and then sometimes I'll look to see what vehicles there are there, and if they're getting sneaky, they park them on the other side.
They're like, they wait for you. It's like, aha!
Are we ready to go on, or are we?
We're kibitzing.
Yeah.
All right, computer usage.
Let's move on. We're on tape. We got a town business. Let's move on. I'm over to three seventeen.
Well, at three, I, we skipped over internet and computer.
Right, I read it. I didn't have any comments.
Well, except the one thing we're not, we do have a computer policy that no one's following here with our emails.
Yeah, but we have a system that doesn't work, so it's not in there yet, and...
It does work. No one just wants to follow it, so...
No, that's not true, Elizabeth. Alan said that he's gonna do something. Elizabeth says she can't get anything. I think Bruce, you had a problem with the system that it doesn't work.
I'm just pointing out, we have a policy and no one's in compliance, so...
That's fine, that's fine, because we have a system that doesn't allow it.
It works. Everyone in the town hall uses it, except for the town board members.
I'd be fine if he would. It worked for me for a while, but...
Doesn't work currently?
Yes, it works currently. I use it on, I use it on two of my computers.
Well, this is kind of a silly argument. Let's move on.
We're on computer usage.
So...
Only silly because you don't wanna do it.
Does this policy that's here, there was a policy that was put forth by the town, like, what, two years ago? Does this, was this language?
No, that's why I'm raising it. We are not referencing a policy that we've accepted.
I'm not talking about the use of email addresses. I'm talking about the policy about what can, somebody can and can't do or use or access on a computer. Okay, that, there was a policy that was adopted. I don't know where this language comes from and if this is the same as that policy. I don't want you to end up with two documents.
But we're gonna, I just made a note here. We're gonna pull the computer policy.
I think this probably is current language, if I had a guess.
It says modify section, but it doesn't, like I said, I don't think this takes that policy into...
We'll have to pull it.
Anything before three seventeen? That bullet about consuming food only in designated areas so that work areas are kept free of food and related litter.
Where is the, well, I'm, I'm on visitors. Are we really gonna say there's no visitors? People visit all the time.
That's correct.
I mean, really?
Well, it says visitors are allowed for brief visits during employee's meal break, as long as visit does not...
Yeah, it says personal visitors.
Interfere with town operations. Maybe just take out meal break.
Take out the word meal.
So it'll, revisitors are allowed for brief visits as long as such as not interfere with the town's operation.
Yep.
Okay. Consume food only in designated areas on three seventeen one. I guess I would take that out. People eat at their desk. There is food around.
Especially since... Yes, take that out.
Standards an employee must maintain, three eighteen. Personal appearance in a manner that reflects a good image. I would say the town board or any department head will have the authority to determine what's appropriate.
We, we haven't said that the town board has the authority to supervise employees, but now we're saying that they can determine what's appropriate or what's not. I would just leave that whole thing out.
Leave out, take a whole sentence out?
I don't know. Bruce?
I'd keep it in. You know, you're gonna be the department head, or the supervisor's gonna be the department head for most of the things in town hall.
But you, you want the town board to weigh in what people can wear or how they can look?
If the town board is inclined to do it. Yeah, I think it's a, a major decision if you're telling somebody they're inappropriately dressed.
Bruce?
No, like, I could see where the town board would have a policy. And then that would become the standards. But I think the way this sits is fine. I don't wanna be in the conversation when it's had.
No.
So you wanna leave it alone, or?
I'd leave it alone.
Change. Going on?
Well, question three nineteen point two. The employee must inform the town supervisor of any outside employment or to prevent a possible conflict of interest, so like, you know, the guys at the Highway Department, some seasons they have mowing jobs, other seasons they don't. You really want the town supervisor to know that?
I think it has to be department head.
I agree.
Where is that?
Three point nineteen point two, second to last one. Which town supervisor, which department head?
In the first paragraph or the second paragraph?
In the first paragraph.
First paragraph, please, must notify department head.
And I would put this in, this disclosure in the personnel file. Because if there was some kind of an injury or something, you've got it. Another thing to look at.
You mean like workman's comp?
Yeah. We always had to do that at IBM.
So, so then you gotta make that, I wanna put that in here, just, you know, disclosure. Town must be, you need to insert language. What language are you suggesting?
That I'd say the department head's desk notes on the subject are given to the supervisor to put in the personnel file.
No, I think, I think, I think the language that I'm saying has, has to direct employees to to inform the department head when they've taken another job, and the department can forward that information, that's fine. But there's nothing in here that says an employee has to tell, right?
Employee must inform.
Employee must inform department of any outside employment. Okay.
Right, and then we'll add another sentence saying that the department head must make some kind of note that goes in the personnel file.
This is so I can find out what you're doing out on Tels Road.
Um, are we good with this? Are we moving on?
Yeah, moving on.
Absences. Tardiness, doesn't, does this contradict our time clock punching in and out? I guess not. It's separate.
What's section?
Tardiness. I'm fine with all this. Bruce, Joe, any changes?
Yeah, I...
Jury duty leave, I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with it.
I think I'm over to three, uh, fourth, three, four.
Is your FMLA up to date? Four point three?
Four point three point two?
All of it. Four point three inclusive.
Well, it's a federal...
I know, I'm sorry.
It is up to date.
Is it?
Yeah.
Cause this, I think this is language that was taken from the old two thousand six approved handbook. FMLA has changed significantly since two thousand six. I don't think this language has ever been...
Yeah, I have a note here. We have to ask Richardson if this is correct, that it looks like we're exempt if we have less than fifty employees who work twenty or more calendar work weeks.
I don't think you are exempt, though. We came up against this. There's a case of this in the town.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask him if we are exempt.
Yeah, well, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had to have fifty employees or more.
No. It turned out possibly not, because you have to look at the entire town, this is...
Four, three, four. I, spouses, I don't know if in the second bullet is the right word. I guess it should be to cover under, yeah, partners or, I, I don't know what the proper word is. Spouses too limited. Spouses or partners?
Yeah.
Domestic partners, or are you, or are you also saying people who are dating?
Or people who are what?
Dating.
No, I don't think we wanna cover dating.
So you want spouses or domestic partners?
Spouses, well, is it and or domestic, domestic partners? Is that the term?
Correct.
Nobody has anything else. I am up to four, three, six. Do we have a leave of absence request form?
Not that I know of.
You do?
I wrote it.
Should we mandate that?
Yes.
And have John, or maybe get Kathy's form and see if it's...
This is a shally thing.
Appropriate.
And it should say department head, not town supervisor.
Where are you?
Four, three, six. Department head, four, three, seven.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. On four, three, six, if there's unusual. An employee is gonna be out for a period of time. Shouldn't the supervisor know at least thirty?
Hi, department head.
The employee must complete and submit it to, it's just, department head shouldn't go up to the supervisor if a highway person is gonna be out for a long period of time.
I don't supervise the Highway Department.
What?
I don't supervise the...
No, no, but shouldn't.
I don't have...
Statutory.
So what if it's not? I don't know, you want department head?
I think so.
Excuse me, notification requirement is a little bit, it's, it's talking about two things at once, because it's talking about unpaid leave versus paid leave, but there are notification requirements for paid leave as well. So... Right? This is not making a distinction.
Why should it make a distinction?
Because it's...
If somebody's not gonna be at work for a...
Because this says thirty days, and it's specifically referring to...
Now, this meaning which paragraph?
Four point three point six. Somebody's not gonna give a thirty days notice if they're not required to for vacation or personal time or comp time or bereavement.
Well, but unpaid leave.
Right, but the section heading says notification requirements referring to all time off. Right?
Yeah, but...
So it needs to be separated, unpaid leave and paid leave, right?
I, I...
I don't think it does.
Uh, yeah, I, I wouldn't separate it.
Just leave it.
And we're making it all department heads.
Yep. Yep. Um. Medical certification.
What section are you in?
4.3.8. Supervisor may request a second opinion by another healthcare provider.
I think that's probably appropriate.
Yeah.
If the department head has a concern at that point.
They'll go to the, should it be town?
To the level of.
Should it be town board?
Well, you know what? You could probably just say the town.
Yeah, let's just say the town.
Because then you could have a department head or a whoever's officially representing the town, the board or the supervisor.
What do you guys say?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you should say the town.
I'm okay with that.
I'm with all this medical.
I'm just wondering if this is correct. If it's an unpaid leave, we continue to pay for medical coverage?
Which?
This is 4313. I don't think that's right.
Let's check that.
I, I read it differently than you, Joe. I read it as saying during the unpaid leave, employee's eligibility status will not change. All employee contributions must be paid, meaning that they pick that up, the employee contribution.
Right, but that may be 10% or whatever, 12 and a half percent, but we pay the rest of it.
Yeah, because you've granted the leave, right?
Uh.
I think we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, but say somebody wants a year off and we're inclined to do it. I don't think that's happening with your people. Crensa, doesn't he pay for our medical at this point?
Question now?
Yeah, that's not, it's not appropriate.
And you're in a health.
Okay, somebody, excuse me, uh.
If somebody theoretically anywhere in the town is out on workers' comp issue.
They're still covered.
For their own disability, they're, to keep their insurance active because that's now on an un, they're not on, they're not currently working for the town, right? They're on a disability or workers' comp. They have kick in their portion to happen. They have to do that to keep their medical leave, their insurance active. Because there's no paycheck coming to them for it to be automatically drawn from. So they have to physically pay in the money.
Right, but what about the rest of it, the bulk of it?
They're still have a status, their employment hasn't changed around leave. So the town's still kicking in the town's portion and the employee is kicking in the employee's portion.
Well, let's just find out how this works now.
That is how it works now.
Mm-hmm. May be right.
Yes, it is.
What?
I said, yes, I am.
I can't hear you.
Yes, that is how it's working now.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
Unrelated here.
Have one related.
Well, I have guys that wear these ear things and listen to radios. Wear these earbuds, which I think is very dangerous. And they're walking around with it and stuff and they got music playing and they can't hear nothing. Any way we can prohibit the use of that?
But we're on medical insurance right now, an unpaid leave.
But.
I think that's a handbook issue.
That's what it is.
I'm sorry.
No, I think you're right. It is a handbook issue. It should be stated somewhere.
Yeah, it should be stated in years somewhere. I mean, just today I called up to an employee and.
You know what, let's.
He's 50 feet away from me and he can't hear me.
I think, um, optional policies. We could put something in for, um, MP3 players, personal music players, earbuds. You guys agree?
Yeah.
Let's just put it as a note on the front.
Yeah, but I don't know what we put in. Some people play music in there.
You're not allowed to, you're not allowed to.
Earbuds.
Just earbuds? Is that the only thing we're talking about?
Because that interferes with the hearing. You can hear over music that's playing. Prohibit the use of earbuds, earbuds.
Okay.
I think you should say devices that inhibit or restrict the senses.
Yeah, I mean, if you're in a cab of a truck and blaring music and can't hear anything else, it's sort of the same thing.
Okay.
I made a note there. I think we need to kick it too.
But I don't think you should just call out earbuds.
No, I agree.
AWOL, all right.
Where's AWOL?
4.4.1.
Is that the right?
AWOL.
Four what?
441.
Right. You have a change or?
No, it's, I just like acronyms.
He likes AWOL.
You want to take out AWOL? It's fine. I don't care. Should we take it out?
No, we're fine with it.
Okay. We go over to part five. 52.
These are all boilerplate.
Yep.
I don't know about arrest and conviction records.
Where's that?
In 521. If that's a protected class. I have to ask where he got this from. I don't know where that comes from.
I, I actually agree with Joe on this. That shouldn't, that's not a protected class, right?
I've never seen it, but I don't know where he got it from, so I'll ask him.
I mean, you would want to know.
And same thing down in 532.
No, actually, I'm trying to remember. It says unlawful and discriminating. You can't on a conviction record. But there are times where you can lawfully say you're not eligible for this because of this in the background, such as you had a license plate so you can't drive or there's a theft, you can't be a comptroller, you know, something like that. So I don't think.
Let me ask where it came from. I think if we are hiring people who've been convicted of child molestation who work in our summer camp, we could be criticized for that. And I don't know if you can rely on the word unlawful.
I know the town of Woodstock just, just adopted a policy that removes the question on their employment application of have you ever been convicted or a client? Because they find that then if you're automatically discriminated against without the opportunity and excluded from even an interview, without the opportunity even explaining perhaps what the circumstances are. So there's a movement underway to get towns to actually remove that.
Let me ask about it.
There's no timeframe in this, Joe. Just remember, so if somebody got arrested in 1952 protesting something in Washington.
Or 1979 for protesting a nuclear power plant or something.
Right, it doesn't mean that. Right, but, but that, that's kind of thing, so.
For instance.
The background check kicks out the, the stuff you were talking about, Joe.
Right, but this doesn't mean we couldn't hire somebody with an arrest record.
Right, but this.
It just says we cannot discriminate.
Right.
Joe wants, we want to discriminate.
Yeah, you may want to discriminate. If somebody's been convicted of molesting children, you may not want to hire that person.
We're not hiring you.
For the summer camp.
But there are safeguards for that. The background check that is required goes through that.
Yes, and you find out. Now, the guy says, your policy says you cannot discriminate against me for a conviction. Yes. Last year I was convicted of molesting and raping 25 children, but you said in your policy.
You got this, Brad.
Yeah, I know. Taken out of context.
Really?
So I, I think we got to ask about this. Is this?
Yeah, it's fine to ask.
The words spoken are unheard of.
Exactly. There's like a, there's a sound bite right there.
I don't think I have anything else in here.
Oh, boy. When did I give up on that?
So you want to, uh.
I have a question, please. You, these are your compliance policies. I don't see in here, am I not looking workplace violence?
Yes, it's in here.
Is it?
Yep. We've raised over it already.
Sorry?
Let me see.
I see. Mental disabilities, equal employment, fair treatment, sexual harassment, drug free. I do not see workplace dispute resolution. There is no workplace violence policy in. And it is required in the New York State law.
It isn't spelled out specifically.
Sorry?
It isn't spelled out specifically.
Nope, it's not. It needs to be.
Per se violations that should be under. I thought I saw it.
No, it should be a separate section under this part five. It should be in.
Let me raise this.
Under which part, Kathy?
Well, see, section five is all your compliance policies and each particular one is either, you know, five, next one is.
Let me raise it with, uh.
5.2, 5.3 should be a 5.0.
Let me raise it. Let him draft it if it's missing. Uh, anybody else have anything on this? Should we tackle the next one?
No, let's do another day.
Well, we have another half hour. You know, we got to get finished with this at some point. Why don't we stay till what we agreed to is 2 o'clock? You.
Because you've worn us down.
What?
You've worn us down.
Yeah, I'm.
So when do you want to schedule the next one?
Can I make a recommendation that you have either Shelley or Kim, somebody from your bookkeeper's office be a part of this going forward?
I, I think what we're going to do is when we have another draft, we will run it by them. We don't really need the whole town hall or all our employees on the first draft. When we have something, then we will circulate it. We will have a meeting and I think it will be very valuable to get Shelley's input and to get the input of a lot of people, but for a first draft.
This is your opinion?
That's my opinion.
Okay, very good. It's your opinion. And I'm again expressing opinion, making a suggestion that it expedites things because you'll get the sections that you might be missing in at an earlier point if you actually include the people who have to, um, actually enforce this. In my opinion.
So when are we going to set the next meeting?
Bruce? Sorry, I'm just having trouble opening.
Now, the next one I don't think applies to union. And this is, I think, designed for non-union.
Um, when would you like to do it? What about next Thursday at the same time?
No, I can't do it. Oh, wait, uh, yeah, Thursday is, uh. Yeah, the 26th, I cannot do it. Do it Friday afternoon?
No.
Second or third of March?
The third of March?
What day is that?
Tuesday, March 3.
I could do 10 on that day, 10 to 1.
10 to 1 is fine. Then the seniors have the hall at 1. Thanks for coming.
Yep.
We're off, Fred?
Yeah, you want, are you off?
Well, are we finished?
We haven't adjourned our meeting.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.